Travis joins us and Carrie joins us. We will just adjust the role. Well, I don't know because we have to make some changes here. We don't have enough.
Yeah, we're still down. We don't have a call yet.
Yeah.
We could, we could start a discussion then.
Kelly is texting Travis.
Okay. There is going to be a few adjustments made to the agenda. We will be going into executive session at 10:00 a.m. this morning. And then after executive session, we will be discussing the budget. So I am going to be going a little out of order.
And Denise, I think yesterday Maureen Doyle indicated that she had a conflict. And Andy Sacco texted me earlier this morning. He is having a family matter that he has to attend to. So neither of those individuals plan to be in the meeting today.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Well, while we wait for Travis, this is going against being a little out of sorts. But Colleen, is she on the phone or on the call? Not yet. Okay.
Colleen.
Okay, so what we'll do, how about this? We'll call the meeting to order. Of this Thursday, May 27, 2021, of the SUNY Aerie Board of Trustees. Madam Secretary, can you please take the role?
Travis is on.
Perfect.
Todd Hopler.
Here.
Lynn Lenahan.
Here.
I am here. Carrie Phillips, delayed. Jeffrey Stone.
Here.
Susan Swartz. Does anybody reach out to Susan?
Excuse.
She's not attending. She notified the chair that she's out, would not be attending.
Thank you. Denise Wilson.
Here.
Travis Polling.
Here.
We have six.
Perfect. Now we can call the meeting to order on the SUNY Trustees Board, Board of Trustees meeting, May 27th at 9:00 a.m. For the first item up for approval is our consent agenda. Items of Board Minutes, Committee of the Whole Minutes, Buffalo Motor Car Second Extension, and Starfish Topson Renewal, all of which have been discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meeting approximately two weeks ago. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. For board information, there are eight items before us today. Again, we have reviewed, we have reviewed these items at the Committee of the Whole Meeting.
There's by which each of these groups can participate in policy development. It calls for the organizations to specify, you know, how, what their bylaws say so that they can participate, how committees should be structured, procedures should be structured, and, you know, the wherewithal of committees so that they can, in fact, have a structured discourse and bring policies or proposed policies to the policy committee for its review. Doug, do you want to elaborate on this?
Yeah, I think this is, this is an important revision of a previous policy that, in which the board firmly endorses shared governance through a faculty-staff governance organization, the College Senate, and a student governments organization, the Student Government Association, and talks about their role in organizations. Thanks.
And we do encourage, we, the policy committee has a template that's available on the website and encourages anybody who has an idea that they want to bring forward to put it in the same format that we're used to looking at and submit it through the office, through Kelly. And we will look at it and are all good ideas are welcome. And we encourage everybody to please, you know, be involved as we develop the blueprint for operations at the college. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there, is there any opposed? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last policy before you is the gender-neutral bathrooms policy. In New York State, we have a new law that was passed last December requiring all single-stall bathrooms in the state to be gender-neutral. And this policy, in compliance with that law, designates all public, single-occupancy bathroom facilities on each campus as gender-neutral. Does anybody have questions about this policy?
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Acceptance? And Todd, did I hear your second?
Yep.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Items one through three have been moved and approved.
And then you just have our meeting from our April 14th meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee for your information.
Thank you Chair Mathiello for this work. Just, I feel that the Policy and Governance Committee is the foundation, a lot of times, of, of the college and how we, how well we can work together. So just thank you.
And, and I would just say, as we move into budget discussions later, if there are practices that we are, you know, engaged in now that, that should be bubbled up to policy so that we codify our current approach, please keep that in mind as we are going through the budget deliberations.
Thank you. Um, again, going to switch a little bit. May I have Travis, are, are you ready for the student trustee report?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, as far as anything new to report, I don't have anything new, but I would like to take a moment to thank a lot of the student government officers that had served this past year. This is the end of the cycle for everyone this last semester. And it's also beginning a new cycle for the new officers that are coming in, which a lot of them were present here for the presidential kind of interviews and were able to give a lot of good feedback. So I do want to acknowledge all, all the work that our officers did, put in this, during this challenging year, this past year. And I'm very excited for all the new officers and students who are going to come on this next year to, to bring a lot of good work to the advancement of the institution and the student, future of the students that are here now and going to be coming in here in the fall.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I put Travis on the spot for one moment?
Yes, please.
Travis, you want to share with the board how well you did this semester in your academic studies?
How well I did?
And your final test, too.
Oh, I mean, I, I did okay, I guess. I know, I told you on my final test, I got two wrong on that final exam. So I was, I was very proud of that accomplishment and, you know, put a lot of work into that. So it was obviously a very challenging year. There was ups and downs, but, you know, I, I think that, you know, a lot of the students are very resilient. You know, they're very dedicated to learning. And I hope this next year we can really improve some of the things, the challenges that we face and, you know, continue to strive for excellence. If that's one thing that I think that, you know, we can all agree that we've learned this, this past week, especially with the new, during the candidate, new candidate process was that, you know, we really need to think about how we achieve excellence in every aspect of our institution, between student success and, you know, between all administrators, faculty, and everyone. It was very highlighted, and that's a discussion I know between myself and obviously the Student Government Association that we're really going to advocate for this next year.
Thank you Travis, and we are happy to have you for another year. Not often we get a student trustee two years in a row, so thank you. And also congratulations on your award.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, please, please tell us the, the name of it again.
Oh, it's, it's for the Python and Capa All-New York Academic Team. So that was, that was presented last month with President Ruder, Doug Shite. We're present, oh, and Dean Petrya, Peter Mill. So that was recorded and we had other fellow students there and it was exciting to be able to get that award.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your, all your contributions with the board.
Thank you.
College Senate. Colleen, there she is. Oh, she's on the phone.
Good morning. Sorry about that. It was the school calling about nothing, so that's always a good thing. It's like, oh, my goodness. So College Senate met for May. It was the last Senate meeting of the 2021 academic year. As far as this semester, we do have one more on June 8th, but that's technically the start of the new academic year. And then we take some time off in July and August and meet again in September. We had our elections. I was re-elected as chair. This is going to be my fourth term. And Erica Hendra was elected as vice chair, and this is her third term. And then in April, of course, we had different elections for delegates and senators. And then, so we had a little update from myself, from Bill, from Mark Pacholik and Amy Yoder regarding COVID-19. And of course, everything is changing rapidly with new CDC guidelines and things like that. So our team is working very hard to keep up with the latest things. And then, of course, fielding queries from faculty, staff, and students regarding mask-wearing and vaccines and different things as we're looking to keep up with what the CDC is throwing at us, but also what SUNY is telling us as well. So it's this balance. So I, I super appreciate Amy and Mark. They're doing an awesome job and it's a job I, I, I don't want to have. So they're doing a great job. So we discussed, it was actually kind of a light meeting, which was nice. We didn't really have any things to approve. We're looking, we introduced four resolutions from the Faculty Council of Community Colleges regarding general education. There's two for that. And we're working with our General Education Committee and coming up with ways that we're, whether or not we're going to endorse or what we're going to respond with SUNY. They are changing the general education requirements. And some of them are good, but some of them, there's opinions because it looks like perhaps U.S. history might not hit a gen ed requirement anymore. So it's affecting our, our social science. So we're, we're looking into that. We're doing investigations over the summer to see how we want to move forward with whether or not we're going to be endorsing those resolutions. We're also looking at a resolution that concerns shared governance with the decision to choose the new LMS, that our Learning Management System, which is similar to Blackboard, where our online courses are hosted, and how that was, that decision was made without faculty input across the state. So we're looking into that as well. We also have a Starfish task force, and we know that Starfish is moving forward. So with the new LMS, with Workday and with Starfish, we're looking to, we had a meeting yesterday to see how those three programs integrate with each other, if there's overlap between them. So with the, the new LMS that's coming out, we're not sure exactly what package we're going to have and which bells and whistles, because it hasn't come out yet. But based on, once we have that information, we're going to work with Workday and Starfish to see if any, anything is overlapped. So we can maybe look at combining services and things like that or not. But the goal is, oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, quick question. So SUNY is changing from Blackboard to this new LMS. Is there an additional cost for the college in that? For us to migrate from Blackboard?
Um, that information hasn't exactly come out yet. And SUNY hasn't actually officially announced
Okay.
what the LMS is, but it's out there. And I can put it in the chat so I don't announce it at our meeting. But I know a couple other local schools use it and some of the privates. And we have faculty members that were adjuncts at some of the privates that use the new LMS. So we're just kind of waiting in the wings for SUNY to tell us what we have, what the package is, what bells and whistles we're going to have. And it's really just a waiting game at this point. Because it's also going to impact training and rolling out. With Blackboard, the, the contract with SUNY, so, and also with us, ends in December '22. Of course, our, our semester ends December 22nd, 23rd, somewhere in there, depending. So 20 days after, the contract is up. So we're looking at different migration plans with our distance learning team under Pat Ryan's guidance and all those things. So hopefully we'll get more information from SUNY over the summer and we can get rolling on our, our rollout and training for the next academic year.
Colleen, was, who would be in charge of ensuring the faculty are trained and ready to use the new system?
Um, that's going to be, yeah. That's going to be our distance learning office. I know we're working on a similar plan that we did with the Blackboard migration. So when we moved from Angel to Blackboard, so we came up with seven, seven to 10 modules. So people that already taught online had to take four modules and get their course set up. And then they were considered trained and then they could teach online the following semester. When we did Blackboard, anyone that had, had not previously taught online had to take seven of the modules. And the modules range from how to effectively use discussion boards, how to set up your class in a organized fashion, the grade book, that discussion boards, how to create tests and quizzes and, and things like that are the, the different modules. So we're tweaking the plan with what the training is going to look like and what specifically is going to be required. I'm on the distance learning committee and we're working with the other faculty leaders and Pat Ryan's team. And then we'll probably, we'll have to loop in Andy Sacco because it is a change in labor. So, but hopefully we'll have all that worked out by the end of the summer. But again, we're kind of being pulled up, held up right now because SUNY hasn't come out and given us anything official yet. So we can't, so we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place right now because we can't ask the new LMS system for, like, training modules so we can get our DL people in there to kind of tinker around and get used to it to start making planning plans. Like planning plans, training plans. So we're just kind of waiting, waiting for the word, waiting for the, you know, the official thing there. So, so that is what's coming up. We successfully moved our general education and our curriculum committee underneath the Senate. We're looking to move academic standards and assessment underneath the College Senate as well. Because in a perfect world, all academic committees go under the Senate and then anything we approve goes up. And then some, some things eventually come to you guys or some things just stay as management in the college.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Denise, just to piggyback on the discussion on Blackboard, we actually had a president's meeting with SUNY last week on the Blackboard contract. Everything that was said is completely accurate. They have not announced the vendor publicly because contract negotiations are occurring this summer and the contract does expire in 2022 in December. I'd reached out to Pat Ryan, who Colleen mentioned. He's in charge of our distance learning. And I mean, you, you talk Blackboard. Blackboard is our, sort of our lifeblood here. We have, I think he said, like 5,800 sections that are currently delivered through Blackboard. There were like 64,000 students that were using it. As far as a duplicated headcount, that was not including summer one and two. There's like seven or eight different pandemic-related programs using it and then other programs like community ed and Workday Training. So it is, it's got its tentacles throughout the institution. So a change like this is, is not going to be easy. And, you know, unfortunately, SUNY is driving the train on this. And, you know, Colleen's comment about lack of faculty involvement in the decision, I'm not sure who was at the table, but that's, that's troublesome that faculty were not, who are using it on a day-to-day basis, were not part of the discussion and decisions. And sometimes we make decisions thinking that we know all the information without reaching out to people, the true people that are using the, the system itself.
Yeah. So it seems like we will have a, a quick or short learning period. That's why I was asking about the faculty training piece of this and how, how we're going to navigate that. But I just.
Our, our tentative plan is that hopefully they'll give us some sort of shell so our DL team can play with it in the fall. And then we're going to pick people to pilot. I'm, I'm on the pilot. Jason Stein, it's a few other people are piloting because we've been teaching online for a while. We also help train the faculty on how to present their distance learning courses. So there's probably a group of like 15 of us that are going to pilot it for the spring. And then we're going to use that information to start training modules mid-spring and through the summer. And we're hoping to go live with everybody fall '22. That's our, in a perfect world, that's what's going to happen. But that's also not knowing some of those pieces with SUNY. So like, if, if we get all this stuff by August, then that will happen. But we're kind of stuck.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Colleen. Okay, so I wanted to make sure we had, all right. So next I'll go back up the agenda to the report of the chairwoman. And I guess I can just report today that, of course, I have continued several meetings and conversations, both with the engine president, other members of the, the college community. Trying to, my, my goal in, in having these sessions with Christopher from the Foundation and Mark Golub, as well as Andy Sacco and Maureen Doyle, was to just increase communication and transparency among us and build better bridges between the board, their sectors of the, of the college, and the president's office. So I, I have continued with those meetings and have been present throughout. And also just really appreciative of the participation and from those parties and continuing and trying to just bring more communication to, to the college. And I think it's important that we are, we attempt, let me say that, to run on all cylinders and just take a team-based approach and to get the, the very important work done of the college. I will also say, one of the best perks about being the chair is that I'm often invited to a lot of college-level student-led or faculty-led events. And I try to go to everything that I am invited to, primarily because it gives me a sense and a connection to oftentimes the student and the faculty. And one of the events that I was able to attend was given by the library department. And it was a presentation about the human library where several students were able to present their stories. And not just their stories about ECC or SUNY Aerie, their students, their stories on how they got there to the college and what, how the college has helped them to achieve a lot of their goals. And it was incredible and it was touching. And I would encourage every board member, if, if that was recorded, to, to watch that. And, or if it was not, to attend the next one. The faculty who were involved, I know Tahera invited me. And, but everyone who was involved did a tremendous job with that virtual event. And I can, I was thinking as I was on, and I tried to stay on the entire time, how impactful that would be in person and how we should use those types of events to put ourselves more in the public and community facing. Because the stories were, were indeed incredible. And it shows that a lot, the good work that the college is doing to, again, impact student lives. So I thank you for inviting me to that and, and allowing me to attend. And I encourage anyone who is listening out here, if, if you have an event, maybe Bob, because he's going to be involved in most of the virtual events anyway. Just shoot me a, shoot me an invite. And again, if, if my calendar permits, I will definitely try to make this a, a priority for me to be involved in. And another event that I, I attended, and I'm, I'm going to get my date right, but it was a event held by the Criminal Justice Department. And it was to bridge the gap of community from people who have suffered, who, who have lost family members to homicide, as well as the criminal justice professional community. So there was the, a representative from the District Attorney's Office. There was a representative from the Police Department there and also a Social Services Department. So there were a lot of key individuals there. And we had a very robust conversation during that event. And again, the, the, the people who attended were not ECC students. There, there were, of course, faculty members. There were some students. But the, the voice that I heard a lot was the voice of the community. So another way that the college plays an integral role in bringing community together with in bringing community together with, with the work of the college. And we can, we can actually use that to increase our presence in the community. We should not be so far removed that we are looked at as an institution over there. We are Erie Community College and I, I, I want to embrace that. So that was a, a, another great event. Thank you for all of those who participated in that. I would just move on to the ad hoc committee report. And I know that I talk a lot. So if my co-chair Lynn Lenahan wants to give, say anything regarding the presidential search, I would like to turn it over to him.
Thanks Denise. Um, uh, so as everyone knows, we are, um, in the final stages of the presidential search. Um, we had, uh, a pretty busy Monday and Tuesday this week with the, each of the two finalists, um, on campus. Um, for a day-long series of meetings and interviews and discussions. And, um, you know, we are now in the due diligence stage of, uh, you know, wrapping up the, uh, the search and the information that we're, we're trying to get and, uh, about both candidates. I would say that, you know, we've had great participation from the whole college community um, this past week, um, in attending the community forum and the different, uh, constituency sessions that were, that were organized. So, um, you know, we, we've been at this for a while now and, um, we are, you know, again, as I said, in the final stages, appreciate everything everybody has done, both administratively and, um, you know, we've had great staff with Gail, Kelly, Paula, uh, Bob Germani has been, he's been at it with his his great expertise in technology, keeping us, uh, everybody, uh, focused. So, um, you know, we'll be talking later today, we'll be, you know, we have other work to do, but we are in the final stages and, um, you know, hope to, uh, have some, um, decision made in, um, in the, in the near future. If there's any questions, we'll be, you know, we'll be glad to take them as well.
No question?
I would just add, this is Jeff that, maybe echo Len a little bit. We appreciate everyone participating in the whole process and submitting feedback to the board of trustees, uh, with your impressions of the, the candidates. Uh, that's been very helpful and, I, I know I'm still in the process of digesting that, but as I think we all are, but we're paying careful attention to, uh, the comment, all the comments received. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. With no further questions, that is the end of my report. And I would like for interim president Ruder.
Thank you, uh, madam chair. I will be brief and I will also probably ask Phil to chime in a little about, uh, enrollment and then maybe Amy and Mark to fill in some COVID-19 updates, but I'll take a first shot. As far as fall registration, uh, we have started that. Summer enrollment started this past Monday. Uh, we have a second summer session starting after the fourth of July. I don't even want to say, uh, publicly, but right now our summer enrollment is up almost 20% from same point in time last year. It's down about half that amount from fall, uh, summer of 19. It's, uh, I just, we just don't know what is going on. We hope that our enrollment initiatives and efforts are paying dividends, but it's been, uh, it's been a very strange year as far as enrollment, but summer classes did start. Again, we are following all the SUNY guidelines as far as how we can deliver those courses in a safe environment. We have, uh, 22 information sessions, virtual visit days between, uh, May and June. We're looking at doing some targeted community-based in-person events this, uh, summer. We were sort of shut out last year. No one had any, uh, community events, so we are trying to look at that. Uh, Phil is leading a couple of different enrollment initiatives. It's, Phil's sort of the, the lead person, but it's really taking the whole community, college, faculty, staff, everyone's involvement. Uh, he has met with all the academic divisions on looking how we can ramp up our delivery of advanced studies for Buffalo Public Schools starting the fall of '21. As we've spoken, uh, advanced studies, it's also called concurrent enrollment where a student can take transcribed credit while they are still in high school. That transcribed credit not only is good at Erie, but it's good throughout the SUNY system and some private institutions. But the unique thing about Buffalo Public Schools is the fact that it is a district-wide free and reduced lunch program, which means that the college can offer fully discounted student tuition for those courses. So we do not have to charge tuition. Concurrent enrollment normally is a one-third, uh, tuition rate. So that opens up, uh, large opportunities for us. Our challenge will be to take those students that are enrolling in advanced studies at Buffalo, Buffalo Public Schools and transition them to ECC when they complete. And that will be the goal, obviously. Um, Phil is, continues to meet with, uh, faculty leadership to really do a better job looking at how we run our advisement days and open registration, whether we can streamline events, activities. Uh, we, we just need to do a better job on planning and late yesterday, Phil did report enrollment for Fall '21 is still showing a downward trend from Fall of '20. It's a relatively small percentage. We have budgeted a larger percent decrease as of now. Again, it's so early in the enrollment cycle for fall that, uh, those numbers can change rapidly. Phil, if you are on, do you have anything else to add about enrollment?
I, I, no, Bill, you, you covered it, uh, a lot of, the majority of it. I do want to thank, um, uh, Adium and, and Colleen and there's several other faculty that have been involved in that advanced studies project that has been kind of, uh, the exciting part of that, the college community has come together to get this done. Um, it's a big initiative. Uh, you know, they, we, we, we met with every academic division, um, and really took the approach, uh, from a peer-to-peer approach. Uh, the, the faculty who are involved were, are, were, were key in, in moving that initiative forward. There's huge opportunity for us. Buffalo is, uh, a large district, uh, really, you know, with their CET programs. It aligns very well with what the college's mission and programs are. Uh, so we're really hoping to push that forward. The recruitment team and the counselors have been fantastic with all the recruitment. Uh, we, we have been at all of the, uh, the county has done several prom-type events, uh, for, uh, vaccinations at the vaccination sites and the recruitment teams have been at all of those. And we continue to be on the ones that are coming up, uh, yeah, in the next couple of weeks as well. So like I said, it is, um, one of the joys of, uh, that, that I've experienced in this interim position is just how everybody has come together um, and really, uh, focused on this, this enrollment, you know, had, really has become a college-wide initiative. So I just want to thank, and the, and, uh, you know, like, the update I gave Bill, we're about one, one and a half percent down in headcount for fall and about 0.8% on FTE. Those hopefully are, are, our, our goal is really to kind of get flat and then start building on that. So. Hopeful for the future.
Okay. And, and just to, uh, Phil mentioned, he stole my, uh, update under COVID-19, but the county and the college have been, uh, working, you know, side by side through this whole pandemic shifting from testing site to now vaccination sites. And, uh, the county hosted uh, two prom events at both South and North Campus. So May 1st, I believe 866 vac, vaccines were dispensed for high school students that were planning on going to prom. May 22nd, that number actually went up to 994. There were still 525 high school students that got their first vaccine. And we were out there with our recruitment activities. We had some giveaways. And then the county, although some other college tried to take credit for it, but the, the county hosted a, a, uh, site at North Campus for some of the North Town School Districts, Amherst, Clarence, Williamsburg and Sweet Home are four large North Town School Districts. And on May 19th, 977 students got vaccinated and a second event is, uh, scheduled for June 9th. So those are, that is fertile, fertile grounds for the college for recruitment activities. So Phil, thank you for your efforts. Thanks to your team for your efforts and thank the college for all their efforts because that's one of the ways we're going to, um, start changing the, the way the ship is going. So thanks. As far as COVID-19, we, uh, to, as of yesterday, had dispensed, it's really slowing down. But we had done 70,561 vaccines on our campus locations at North and South. The county is looking to start, uh, reducing the number of days it dispenses vaccines, looking at one day a week now at North and South Campus because it really has slowed down. Uh, the county and a lot of efforts by Mark and Amy, they've supplied us with PPE for our pool testing all the way through the summer. So they've been a very good partner, providing us product. Uh, we continue to look at SUNY guidelines. Actually, the chancellor sent something out, a long, uh, memo just last evening. I did a quick read-through and sent it to Amy and Mark this morning, talking about, uh, masks and social distancing, daily screenings. The SUNY board is, uh, supposedly at their next meeting, uh, going to mandate vaccinations for students in order to attend in-person classes in the fall. Right now it's just guidance, uh, based upon, uh, the CDC guidelines, but it is anticipated that they will in fact pass it. We still have to do pool testing. Uh, the exemption will be if you're fully vaccinated, you can, uh, sort of opt out as long as you prove you're vaccinated. As so far this summer, we've done 703 pool tests and we've had, uh, zero positives from that pool test. So that, that is good news. Amy, Mark, uh, if either you or both of you are on, if you want to add anything to that?
Good morning, everyone. Uh, Bill, it's Mark. I'm not sure if Amy is on. Uh, you hit pretty much everything. The only thing I would add is I spoke with Commissioner Gary this morning. The gyms will be coming back to us about the second week of June. They're going to start moving out of the gymnasiums. Definitely at South Campus, North is in flux. And we, a, as you have said, we're working on that guidance for the fall. That is very clear. It's going to be in flux. And the two things that are going to limit us are the CDC guidance on masks and distancing. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Just a few quick college updates. I participated in a virtual middle states, uh, meeting. There were, uh, many colleges, community colleges throughout the state that were in process of a accreditation visit and talked about in-person versus not in-person and what Middle States is finding is, uh, they have indicated that the visits are, have been more robust than in-person. They're having good success. So our visit in September is still, uh, planned for virtual. It doesn't look like that's going to change, but it, uh, everyone's sort of in the same boat, trying to prepare and get ready for their middle states visit. I was asked to participate in a live interview with Jackie Walker on May 5th and, uh, I guess I got too excited about the first couple of questions that she cut me off, but I was able to address, uh, all the items, but it was a good opportunity. And, um, you know, anytime we can talk about SUNY Erie and our students and our staff and our faculty and what we mean to the community, it's a good thing. Obviously, we had our commencement virtually. We, I participated in our Say Yes Operating Committee. There's one right now, which I'm not on, obviously. We met with North Town's Automotive, uh, the, uh, vehicle tech group, uh, Joe Urick, Adium Sagai and I. Uh, they want to replicate the co-op that we have with Wes Herr right now. Unfortunately, we do not have space at the Vehicle Tech Training Center, uh, as it is currently constructed to house that, but we had a good discussion. They are, and Kate, you've been saying at every meeting, they are like many of the employers in the area. They are clamoring for technicians, skilled, uh, students coming out of the college. They're, they're willing to pay for training and earn while you learn model. So, uh, we have to figure out, we talked to them about some of the fiscal concerns and requirements and some of the, uh, abilities to maybe house another program at another location. So those talks will continue. I participated in the, a mom's, a meeting, uh, with Judge Lenora Foot and Chairwoman Denise Wilson, uh, and Patrina Hill-Cheatham. Uh, the grant is ending and we're trying to see how best to facilitate maintaining that grant with our staffing at the college. And, uh, so those discussions continue. We talked about Buffalo Public Schools. Adium Sagai is actually meeting with, uh, Buffalo Public Schools, or no, BOSI's one at 10 o'clock today. We had a meeting with BOSI's two on May 14th. And, uh, I had previous discussions with the BOSI superintendent. He had contacted me a couple of months ago. Uh, to, and I learned that Alfred Tech was actually offering advanced studies at Springville uh, high school, which is in our service delivery area. So I certainly expressed my displeasure with Alfred being in our service delivery area. And so we are trying to sort of pivot with BOSI's two to see, you know, outside the Alfred program, what else can we deliver as SUNY Erie to the Springville, uh, school district, uh, which is part of Erie County. This past Saturday, Mickey Kearns, who's a friend and big, big supporter of Erie Community College, uh, our county clerk, but a, also a SUNY Erie alumni. He hosts a, uh, weekly radio interview on WUFO. And so Mickey had me on for about a half an hour talking about this past year, the experience, the new programs we're delivering, our plans for the fall. And Mickey, uh, he's, he's our big, one of our biggest cheerleaders. He also happens to be Andy Sacco's cousin. So it's, it was in, it was a very positive call. And, uh, again, if you see Mickey, thanks. He's, he's always talking ECC. From an athletic standpoint, George Killian, I'm not sure anyone will recognize that name, but he was a longtime SUNY ECC Athletic Director that had passed away, uh, several years ago. And the National Junior College Athletic Association Foundation Hall of Fame is actually going to honor him as, as an inductee posthumously. And that award ceremony will be on June 24th. Steve Mullen, uh, a few minutes ago emailed us and he indicated that we had eight athletic teams that participated in sports this past spring. And the cumulative GPA for those student athletes that participated, despite all the challenges and the unknowns, had a cumulative GPA of 3.05. I start with the academic success. Now I'll talk about the success on the field. Baseball and softball each qualified for the Region Three Tournament. Unfortunately, our baseball team lost to Nyer County Community College, which I was not pleased with, but, uh, at least we made it to the Region Three Tournament. Our swimming and diving team actually competed at the National Junior College Athletic Association Championships down in Florida. Our women finished fifth and our men finished seventh. And we have started the process. We are going to be full in-person, all sports this fall. And we are starting to reach out to student athletes, recruit, retain and have, uh, make sure that we're maintaining all our COVID requirements. Last evening, uh, myself and actually board member Carrie Phillips attended the chef-to-table, uh, event with Chef Darian, who is, you know, outside Mickey Kearns, maybe the number two former alumni ECC supporter. He is the personal chef for Josh Allen and Stefan Diggs. He has gained a lot of notoriety. But, uh, the foundation sponsored the event. Uh, Denise mentioned Mark Gallin and Christopher. Uh, Christopher was the emcee for the event. It was a fantastic event. Food was great. I actually took two dinners to go. Uh, but the, the nice thing about it, besides it was a fundraising event, they actually had two students that attended that talked about their financial challenges, attending college, looking at- about their financial challenges, attending college, looking at the cost to attend, especially the uniforms and the knives. And that was a barrier for them. It was heartfelt when Chef Darian called out the faculty member on multiple occasions that was in, that was in the audience, as giving him that opportunity, providing those items for him because he came from another country. He had English as a second language. He had that barrier. And she gave him that chance. And look what he's done with it. And she allowed him to cook Jamaican food in, in the restaurant here. And it gave him that opportunity. As Carrie, I just saw in the chat, she's still full. I, I overate too. I gained a few pounds overnight, but it was all good. And the other nice thing about it was, we have been trying to bridge that gap. We focus on student alumni, but we have a lot of staff alumni, faculty alumni. And we actually had four retired faculty members that came to the event, not, not to just hang out. They actually worked the event. They participated. They greeted at the front door. They were servers for the meals going around. So this is just the start of bringing back the, the staff that have retired from the college years, shortly, you know, a few years ago to long-term. So they have a lot to offer our students and our county. I know you're having a 10 o'clock meeting, so I will stop there if you would like, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. And yes, we do have to go into executive session. So may I have a motion to go into executive session?
Someone?
Todd, I heard a second?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, oh, sorry, I rushed. Any opposed? Thank you. We're, we'll be going into executive session now. Madam Secretary?
So in executive session, the board discussed the candidates for the presidential search and voted unanimously to approve a $20,000 bonus effective immediately for interim President Ruder based on his presidential evaluation, his extraordinary service, and the extension of his contract until a new president is hired.
Thank you. And thank you, President Ruder.
Yes.
Thank you.
With that being said, I am going to turn it over immediately to President Ruder for his presentation.
Thank you. And I will ask Bob to put the PowerPoint up. In the interest of time, I will be brief, but please do not hesitate to ask any questions. I've sent some information to the trustees, both on Tuesday and as well as yesterday. I provided much detail. I'll quickly run through some opportunities and challenges, starting with our revenue. So Bob, if you can get up page two. I also just earlier sent the actual PowerPoint to the board. So enrollment, it's the key for us, drives 80% of our revenues. Our two-year trends, we're projecting a 13% decrease in credit enrollment from the budget 2021 to 2122. Two years, that decline is 25%. Three years, it's 30%. Five years, it's 37%. And why I'm focusing on credit enrollment? Credit enrollment drives tuition fees and state aid. Non-credit enrollment only drives state aid. And with the state's funding formula, that really doesn't help us because of that 98% floor. In the budget document that will go to the county, there's, I think, six or seven pages that talk about enrollment comparisons throughout the state and New York. But we are one of the highest loss areas. I have both a total FT as well as a total credit FT trends over the past 10 years embedded in the budget document. Student tuition fees, for instance, is based upon credit enrollment. We went from $54.5 million in 1617 to what's budgeted in 2021 of $39.3 million. And it's gonna go down even further, down to $38.4 million. So you're talking about a $16 million decrease in our largest revenue source over the course of five years. And then the last bullet is important because part of our generally accepted accounting principles, we have to match the expense with the revenue that gets generated from the activities. In 1819, the college administration made a, I guess, a sort of a decision not to write off any student bad debt, which I do not agree with. They chose to say after seven years that the student debt would be written off. So actually, as part of the audit last year, the auditors recognized that we should be writing off bad debt. 1920, we wrote off $4.4 million. So the $3 million loss we had last year would have actually been over $7 million if we had actually recognized the bad debt. So we have budget for bad debts for this year as well as what we're projecting for 2022. Shifting to the next slide, Bob. State aid. We've talked about the state budget. Without the 98%, we would have had a significant decline. But even that 2% means we're looking at about a $200,000, $700,000 loss in state aid from year to year. And similar to tuition fees, our long-term trends, in 1617, we are at $30.5 million in state aid. 2122, we're projecting $27.9 million. So student tuition is the largest revenue source, followed by state aid, and then county contributions are our two largest revenue sources. Enrollment base have declined. County support. I guess one of the biggest positive news items in this budget is the county has agreed to add $1 million in our subsidy. So we're gonna go from $18.8 million annually to $19.8 million, which is the largest increase. I actually went back. It's the largest increase this institution has seen in 14 years. And through this generous, generous, amazing support from the county, we will not be pursuing a tuition increase that was discussed as part of the committee of the whole meeting. It's almost a direct offset. The county support has been nothing less than amazing. Previously, they had provided $846,000 from their CARES money that we recognized partly in 201819 and the remainder in 1920. And the other good thing about this is that no longer are they funding our equipment through subsidy. It's all a lump sum payment. So we'll, by county regulations, we would receive it no later than April 15th this past year, again, because I think everyone's relationship with the county has only gotten us better. Last year, they actually upfront $7 million of our subsidy to help us in cash flow. So we reach out to the county executive. Chairwoman Wilson started the conversations. They were very fruitful. And earlier today, they, Paul Sandy is working with the county's Office of Public Relations to craft a message that will have quotes from both the college and the county about this, I almost call it historic day.
Bill, can I stop you really quick? Can I just stop you? I, I think we need to just take a pause to understand the magnitude of this contribution this year. County Executive Mark Polenkarz, I, I, I know he's probably extremely busy, but may watch this on a replay. I just want to say, thank you so much for your continued support of SUNY Erie and the students of SUNY Erie. It is only because of this contribution from the county and the support from the county that we were able to not raise tuition dollars that would impact our, our students. We are extremely grateful. I, I think I can speak from all the board trustees, but you guys feel free to speak for yourselves. We are extremely grateful for not only the considerations, but you, you just alleviating some potential stress from our students and having to pay higher tuition. And I just want to make one correction to Bill's statement. He started the conversation and he started just thinking innovatively and what we, what we can do to help improve this budget. Interim President Ruder has been instrumental in this, as you all probably well know. So I just want to thank him for that as well. Okay.
Thank you, Denise, for those kind words. But it's really the relationship everyone on this call has with the county executive and county legislature. They have been nothing less than supportive since my return. And so, you know, ultimately, the board will be asked to approve three resolutions that will go to the county. One of the resolutions historically has been highly critical of the county's level of contribution. And it, you know, we got rid of all that commentary because that serves no purpose. The county's support will go up to 22, almost 23% if we remove the one-time stimulus monies that are budgeted for 2122. So this is a large increase for the college and it's something that, congratulations, will be made to everyone involved in it. So shifting quickly to the one-time monies, in total, about $29 million one-time monies, part recognized in 1920, a large amount in 2021. And the remainder, American Rescue Plan is targeted to be utilized in 2122. That will help our budget, help balance our budget for 2122. We, there's a very low level of risk, but there is some risk. DLB has not come out with final guidance. We believe it will be allowable for lost revenues, which this college has money in the terms of lost revenues. But we have identified it as a use in 2122. Shifting, and again, I want to recognize that county also gave us that $146,000. So that's part of the federal dollars. Short-term tuition trends and long-term, we, over the past now four years, we've had one tuition increase at this institution. We had a 3% tuition increase. When I looked at the SUNY data, they have, do not have any updates for 2122. So I looked at a 10-year trend as well as the last three years. Last three years, our total tuition has gone up 3% over three years. Statewide, it's gone up over 11%. With this fourth year of no tuition increase, our average increase in tuition will be now 0.75% per year over the past four years. Prior to this, 2122, we were the 14th highest. We were $26 over the statewide average for student tuition, meaning $13 per semester. I guarantee you that we will be below the statewide average in 2122 through the county's effort. Shifting quickly to expenses, appropriations, personnel. This is, this is our challenge. This continues to be our challenge. I'm not interested in looking back. We have to look forward. We have to continue to look at opportunities to further reduce the number of full-time and part-time employees. We have to maintain a much, much, much more stringent vacancy control and a way that we track this system. So what I've actually done is eliminated all 87 vacant positions from the budget, created a pool of 30 positions with a value of $45,000 position, come with a pool of $1,350,000. And you have my assurance, as long as I'm at this college, each and every personnel action will be tracked by adding or subtracting from this pool. So when the board of trustees hires a new president, guess what? The $1.35 million goes down as we have retirements, as we have resignations. If we do not replace staff, we will add back the savings from those positions. And it's not going to be an annual savings. It will be based upon the number of months remaining in the college fiscal year. We will have further reductions. I'm not saying that we're not gonna have layoffs. We need to most likely have additional layoffs. So that's a evaluation that's gonna take some time. It's not gonna be a knee-jerk reaction. We have to make sure we comply with the terms and conditions of our four collective bargaining agreements. 99% of our staff here is bound by one of those four contracts. So we cannot violate the contracts. We will do it systematically. We will do it strategically, but we will do it correctly. And again, we need to continue to look at it. I did do some analysis. On the day I started, we had 756 checks issued to full-time staff, which is operating and grant-funded. As of this morning, we issued 691 checks. So we are down 65 full-time employees or 8.6%. And during the 19 pay periods this year compared to last year, our salary spend is down $3 million. We'll have fringe benefits, savings on that. But we've had, we've done good work. More needs to be done. We will have some pain. We will have some disgruntled employees. We'll continue to look at ways to shift employees. And we need to make sure we do proper evaluations on employees and hold them accountable for their performance. On fringe benefits, fringe benefits is solely a function of personnel. There's nothing we can do about the fringe costs unless we negotiate a different contract. It's really a function of how many full-time, how many RPT, how many part-time. Obviously, part-time do not have health benefits and health insurance. Full-time have health insurance. Do they have family plan or individual plan? So each fringe factor for an employee is going to be a little different. Contractual expenses, I sent the, the trustees a large spreadsheet that Arda helped put together, and Arda is on the call. She is awesome. She's a rock star. She will be a resource for this college and this board to have for many, many years. But she worked very hard with Josh Sager, who you have all met. And I think we have a very good handle on what our contractual and equipment spend is by department. We have, as I said, we've had, we basically have, if we turn the lights on and enroll a student, we have probably about 16-plus million dollars of fixed costs, meaning if we're open for business, we're paying those dollars out. So 6.6 million of the 19 million is, is for ITS, Workday ERP, Colleague. Starting next year, we'll start seeing some incremental savings in Colleague as we move away completely from Colleague. $2 million for Pathways. We generate state aid. We pay out a share of the state aid to our Pathways partners. Sunk costs, $738,000 for the Police Academy because we waive the student tuition for those individuals taking classes at the Police Academy that are employed by municipalities. $1.1 million for insurance. We had to increase our site insurance for copiers, for the Toshiba copiers. We were looking at that contract to see if we can cut down the number of printers and copiers. We pay out $1.1 million in transportation costs to have the all NF, NFTA bus ride. But we also collect that from students as far as the student fee. So it's a, we can't cut from some contractual without impacting our revenues also. So we are working on, and especially in ITS, they've actually looked at their entire budget ask and broken it down by the fall and spring semester. So depending upon how things go financially, how things go with our enrollment, we can move things from fall to spring or delay fall or not do spring. So we have some flexibility. So Scott Irmer and his staff have done a great job on really sequencing the budget needs over the course of the year by semester. And then the last really major item is fund balance. We've talked a lot about fund balance. It is below board policy and it's looking like it's going to remain there unless we have additional cuts or we grow revenue. And I will say that without the use and the receipt of those one-time federal dollars of $29 million, we would be on the brink of fiscal crisis because our fund balance at September 1st, 2020, is down to about six, is $6.4 million and we're projecting a slight loss for 2021. So it will further erode down to about $5.6 million. Again, woefully short of the board policy. It's not even one month of reserves. And that's our goal, to bring that number up. Finally, some future challenges, opportunities. As you well know, we'll have a presidential transition. I begun looking at the campus realignment. Can we support three, three full-service campuses? I would say we cannot in its current state. I will say that the only other three full-service campus in the SUNY Community College system is Suffolk Community College. And I looked this morning, their credit enrollment is 14,098 FTS. Ours is 6,484. So we are less than half the size of Suffolk and we're the only other one with three full-service. So we are less than half the size of Suffolk and we're the only other one with three full-service campuses. So that is certainly something that needs a critical evaluation based upon data that we look at. We have started, but we continue to do. We have Middle States on visits start September. The American Rescue Plan funds, I mentioned earlier, we do not have final guidance, but we believe we can use it for lost revenues. We need to grow enrollment. We need to control and reduce our operating expenses and most of all staffing. We need to be laser-focused on our staffing needs. And then finally, uh, contract negotiations. We have two contracts that already expired. The administrators and the faculty federation, all the terms and conditions do continue until successor contract is negotiated. We have built-in all contractual increases, whether it's step increases, rank advancement, or administrative advancement. So those are factored into the budget. Our budget for personnel, I would say, is 99.9% accurate. We have accounted for every full-time and part-time position, what their salary is. So I know I have a very good starting point. And that is a lot of effort by George Drosa, really putting these numbers together in high confidence. So we will maintain a very aggressive vacancy control. We'll evaluate the need for every new hire as we move forward. The, the final item, so there are three budget resolutions contained in, and these are just some backup spreadsheets that are actually part of the budget document. So Bob, if you can bring up the budget resolutions. We have three budget resolutions that are embedded in the actual PDF that will go over to the county. Starting on page seven is the one resolution which was affectionately known or not affectionately known as the Maintenance of Effort, that there was a lot of rhetoric about the county's lack of support. I have toned all that down. That serves no purpose to say that the county's not providing. The county provides us resources and assistance in so many ways, whether it's Department of Public Works, the county attorney, county clerk. We get a lot of services that don't have a dollar value. So I got rid of all that rhetoric and really focus on the college and, you know, mentioning the good and some of the challenges that remain and maybe the need to change our budget in the future. But I think it's a much more, um, a better representation of what we want to put forward to the county. Then the second resolution on page nine is just the dollar amount of the appropriation that's included in the budget, 102,746,397. And then the third resolution is just approving the tuition and fee schedule. And the tuition and fee schedule is identical to the 2021 tuition and fee schedule. It has not changed. No fees, no tuition, no rates, nothing. It's identical. So there's zero change. So those are the three resolutions that I would request the board for consideration for approval. If approved, this document, the PDF, will be forwarded to the county executive, the county budget director, and the Erie County Legislature. As of now, the college will be asked to present a mid-year budget review, as well as this budget on June 17th, to the Committee, Community Enrichment Committee of the Erie County Legislature. And by their statute, they normally approve our budget by the last regularly scheduled meeting in the month of June. So I would hope by the end of June, we have a fully adopted budget, both by the trustees and by the college, uh, by the trustees as well as the county. And then that will be submitted to SUNY for their consideration. Again, it's this Board of Trustees tuition fee schedule. They are the only ones that can opine on that, as well as the SUNY board. But I, you know, with no tuition increase, I think that's a very positive thing. And then the Control Board or Erie County Fiscal Stability Authority will weigh in on the budget, as well as the multi-year projections that I've included in the budget document. At some point, I actually presented to them this past Monday, sort of a ECC overview, as well as the 2021 expectations and some challenges for 21, 22. And they were very supportive of the college and what we're doing. So with that, I will pause for any questions. And I apologize for rapidly going through this. I really, I was trying to get the best and most accurate information to base and give to the board as far as a, I believe, a fiscal plan that makes sense and is achievable.
Bill, it's Jeff. It's a very tough environment in which to prepare a budget. Uh, I would just like to thank Chairwoman Denise Wilson and yourself, and in particular, our partners in county government, starting with the county executive, and I guess running through the legislature and the budget office, who recognize the straits in which we find ourselves. And, uh, this is an enhancement of our, our Maintenance of Effort money. Our subsidy, as Bill called it, from the county. It's really important. It's, we are very grateful for it and our students will greatly benefit by it. And here we are seeing the first evidence of that in the sense that we will not be raising tuition this year as a result of that action. So, um, I just applaud the leadership all around here in getting this accomplished.
Thank you, Jeff.
Like to echo that. And, uh, thank you, Bill, for all your hard work. We keep getting all these, this information for the last couple of weeks constantly from you. And we appreciate you keeping us apprised of developments as they occur. Um, I would just reiterate what I said earlier. If there are any practices that you've put in place that you think need to bubble up to the Policy Committee, please let us know.
Yeah, I wrote that down, Kate. I, I didn't even think about it. I know, um, I owe a couple of things. I just, I have a lot of, my to-do list doesn't go down, it just expands. I know I have a couple of policies to look at. And, you know, what you said is important. I, so I have to look at it. I know there's a purchasing policy and a couple of other things out there. But if there's other items that come up, I will certainly, uh, mention it and craft a policy for the board to consider. I think it's a, a good thing for having policy in place on budget development and some other areas of vacancy control. And, uh, we, we need to get back to, um, some sense of doing things by the book.
We just need to have clear expectations. And so that would be really helpful if, uh, you know, these good tightening of the screw, you know, just tightening the belt, um, procedures you've put in place that we codify them. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, uh, I would make a motion to approve the budget resolutions. Do we need to do it one at a time?
A second then.
I think we can approve them together.
Okay.
Um, so we have a motion, there is a second. We don't need to do this individually, do we, Kate?
Yeah, if you like.
Okay. Well, this is, this is a big deal, so. So let's do it individually.
On the budget then, as presented, Todd Hobler.
I vote to approve.
Lynn Lenahan?
Approve.
I vote to approve. Carrie Phillips? Are you still with us?
He's with us, but she may have had to.
She was.
He's here, but, I mean, she's logged in. She's just maybe had to.
She's muted, Bob said.
Oh.
Do we have enough?
We'll come back. Uh, Depp Stone?
Uh, yes, on all three resolutions, like all of us, we're voting on all three. Yes, on all three.
Denise Wilson?
Yes, on all three.
Travis Poling?
Yes, all three.
So that is six votes in favor of all three budget resolutions.
Okay, thank you. So the resolutions have been passed. And, um, Kelly, you and I can work to figure out signatures and things of that nature. But if you can also just text Carrie to let her know we're wrapping up and if she would like her vote recorded.
She is right now.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Um. I'm sorry, just one second. Give her a second. Before we move on. Okay, so what?
She said she can unmute.
Oh, okay.
Can she call in?
She texts.
Uh, she should call in.
Okay.
Oh, we hear you, Carrie.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I hit, I was just hitting unmute repetitively and it just would not unmute. And I'm like yelling at the computer. Yes, I approved when you asked before, but no one can hear me and I'm here.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
That's seven votes in favor.
Um, all right, so moving on, is there any old business? Oh, I'm sorry, not moving on. The budget has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Any old business?
Um, I'll just jump in, Denise. I, you may have mentioned it earlier, and I know we've mentioned this in the past, but since this is a formal Board of Trustees meeting, I would like to express on behalf of all the trustees, I'm sure they join me, our appreciation to everyone who participated as a member of the Presidential Search Committee. Um, it was a very diverse and excellent, thoughtful group of people. All of us benefited by being part of that group who were in it. So I would just like to, uh, here at a board meeting, say thank you to everyone who said yes to that volunteer opportunity. It was very helpful to the college to have all of you participate.
You're here.
Um, is there any new business? I just want to take this moment, uh, to actually acknowledge this Board of Trustees. This is a amazing group of individuals. We have great conversations, great discussions, but I, I will bet $5. Bill knows, that's my, that's my, that's my limit. I would bet $5 that each and every one of us would agree that we are here, we give our time and our energy for the success of this, of the, of the students and this institution. And because we are so passionate about that, this has just been a tremendous experience for me. And I am very fortunate to serve with such a dynamic group of individuals. So I just want to say from me to you, thank you. Okay, is there any other new business? We already did executive session. Schedule of next month's meeting, month's meeting. The next meeting of the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees is scheduled for June 24th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
The move motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Weekend, everyone.
Yes, happy Memorial.
Happy long weekend, if you're taking the long weekend.
Thanks, all.
Thanks, everybody.